Good evening everyone and welcome to the special public board meeting of the Halton District School Board. Tonight we have trustees and staff both in person and online for this board meeting. We will be using the crest drawn system for both voting and speaking. Please be cognizant of the speaking order and wait for the chair or the vice chair to recognize you in both private and public session. This is likely to be a meeting filled with memories, laughter, and maybe a few tears. So I'm really asking that we all be mindful of the rules of the road and proper board etiquette. Thank you again for everyone to be here. Trustee Rocha, would you like to make a motion to go into private session?
I would.
And trustee Reynolds, would you like to second that?
I do, thank you.
Is there any debate? Are there any objections to moving into private session? Seeing none, by unanimous consent, we are now in private session. Vice Chairl Harrison, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special public meeting of the Halton District School Board. The date is November the ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. I would like to welcome our guests, both in the gallery and online. Thank you for coming. We appreciate you being here to show your interest in the discussions that we have at the board. I would like to acknowledge, first of all, that Friday is Remembrance Day. On Remembrance Day, we honor those who gave their lives to serve our country. I know that the Army, the Air, and the Sea Cadets have been out selling poppies alongside some of our amazing veterans, and will take an active role in the commemorative ceremonies which are occurring in Burlington at the Senataph in Veteran Square on the north side of City Hall on Friday. I hope you are all able to take time to reflect on the sacrifices that have been made to allow us to have the lives we live today. Remembrance Day is also known as Poppy Day, and I'm just going to give you a little bit of a fun fact because we were talking about this the other day in the other room. The Poppy Campaign begins last, the last Friday in October and continues through to November the eleventh. You are allowed to wear your poppy up until the end of the Remembrance Day ceremony and then it's seen as respectful for taking it off. For those in our gallery, we welcome you this evening. As a reminder, my role as Chair is to maintain decorum so that the board may engage in discussion, debate, and decision-making regarding our mandated roles in a respectful and efficient manner. All persons attending meetings must show respect for others in their language and their conduct. Notices are posted around the room to remind you of the importance of a safe, secure, and respectful environment for all. Words or actions that make others feel threatened or demeaned will not be tolerated, and decisive action will be taken to ensure the safety and comfort of all. If you so choose to continue in inappropriate behavior, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Please do know, though, that we do want you all to be able to be here. We respect and appreciate your attendance in support of the concerns that you may have. However, if you so choose to disturb or interrupt the meeting, you will be asked to leave. You're able to watch the duration of the meeting from the gallery if you do so in line with our code of conduct. If visitors and media have questions, you have the opportunity to submit your questions through the electronic question submission form on the HDSB website. Again, if you look around the room, there are QR codes that link directly to this form. Please also remember that trustees are concerned with governance, and only questions directed towards issues of governance will be addressed. Please also remain seated for the duration of the meeting. We remind all those visiting, including media, that participation must be done through that online form. All right, I will start with our roll call. Trustee Amos.
Good evening, everyone.
Trustee Collard.
Good evening, everyone.
Trustee Daniele.
Thank you, I'm here.
Vice Chairl Harrison.
Hello, I'm here.
Trustee Garrett.
Very happy to be here.
Trustee Gray.
Present, thank you.
Trustee Grabent.
I'm here.
Trustee Oliver.
Good evening, everyone.
Trustee Reynolds.
Hello all.
Trustee Rocha.
Good evening.
Trustee Rogero.
Good evening.
And Trustee Wang.
Good evening.
Thank you. Director Ennis, can you please note staff that are in attendance this evening, please?
Thank you, Chair Shuttlerworth. I am happy to report that we have a full complement of senior staff here tonight to support the board meeting.
Thank you so much. So tonight, Trustee Reynolds will be honoring the land.
Thank you. Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Ottawa Teron, the Haudenosaunee, and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in Indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us. Thank you. In following the practice of some of my colleagues and even our student trustees, I would just like to take a moment and provide a reflection of what the land acknowledgement means to me. I'm reminded of where our journey began when we collectively reviewed the calls to action of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. We decided to take steps to unlearn what we thought we knew of history of Indigenous peoples and how they were impacted and continue to be impacted by colonialism. This acknowledgement for me is a reminder to center First Nations, peoples, and voices in our journey of understanding the First Nations realities, treaty relationships, and certainly celebrating the contributions from these peoples. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Reynolds. Okay, we are now up to the agenda. Trustee Oliver, would you like to move a motion to approve the agenda?
I move the motion.
And Trustee Grabent, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, are there any objections to approving the agenda? And again, seeing none, by unanimous consent, the agenda is so approved. So in relation to this evening's agenda, are there any possible conflict of interest? Wonderful. Seeing none, we are now up to items two point zero delegations and presentations to the board. Item two point one is our student trustee report. Trustee Rogero and Trustee Wang, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, we do.
Wonderful, go ahead, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you've all been doing well since the last time we met. I'm super excited to be back in the boardroom in person and sharing with you all our student trustee report for this meeting. Trustee Rogera and I have a few updates regarding the HDSB's School Liaison Officer Program, the development of the Mental Health Leadership Committee, Senate updates, and a few thank yous we'd like to share as we approach the inaugural meeting for the Board of Trustees next week.
To begin, since September, Trustee Wang and I have been collaborating with Superintendent Fowler to ensure and collaborate with her offices and continue communication with the Halton Regional Police and the Youth Liaison Officer Program to ensure that one of the largest stakeholders in the HDSB, the students, are consulted in the development, implementation, and deployment of school liaison officers within our board. Trustee Wang and I have proposed the need for a system that considers the diverse lived experiences of students in the HDSB and to protect students from involuntary recall of previous traumatic experiences that the presence of an officer or topics pertaining to the law may trigger. Now, this need is outlined within the HRPS SLO, a student overview document which was sent to the Superintendent of Safe Schools in mid-September and was a factor in the reevaluation of police programming in our board. Trustee Wang and I appreciate this decision to reevaluate police programming until a comprehensive decision-making tool is developed for administrators when police are requested in schools. In conjunction with administrators, educators, students, parents, and trustees, we look forward to working closely with the superintendent and her office to create a tool that's reflective of the evolving needs of the students in our board. We would like to thank Superintendent Fowler and her office for their student-centered focus and are grateful for the recommendations that were taken to heart and that have impacted the HDSB at such a senior level.
And just a few hours ago, Trustee Rogera and I met with Mental Health Lead Michelle Bates to follow up on the Mental Health Leadership Committee motion that was passed through Student Senate in October. We received a lot of great guidance regarding how to move forward with this motion and how to involve youth in this process. We look forward to involving youth outside of Senate, particularly reaching out to youth well-being teams in our schools, and also spreading representation by region as lived experiences will be incredibly important to highlight during this process. We hope to roll out this process in stages and are currently working on a communications piece for students to join the preliminary team that will set sort of like the framework and the foundation of what this committee will be. And we look forward to updating you all on this really exciting process for this motion that Trustee Rogera and I have poured a lot of effort into.
Trustee Wang and I also had the opportunity to meet with elementary and secondary school senators to establish the vision, commitments, and goals of the Student Senate this year. Students explore the themes of education, awareness, and partnerships as an overarching vision for the year. We are working to establish the top priorities for each of the Senate subcommittees which are in line with the multi-year strategic plan to discuss the evolving needs and wants and the top priorities that students are facing in this board. We took discussions from our last Senate meeting and held breakout rooms and encouraged conversations to have, to be done between students and their schools and the senators to create these goals and visions for the Student Senate. We discussed themes of equity, inclusion, indigenous rights, environmental sustainability, mental health and well-being, and learning and achievement, sparking project ideas like a student voice slash action flow chart, Senate partnerships both with community and post-secondary institutions, and much more. We are thrilled to be bringing these ideas and vision to the next step to finalize the framework of the Student Senate.
A big goal for Trustee Rogera and I this year is following up on past initiatives from student trustees, whether they were officially passed or launched, or they were still in the works. One of these initiatives includes a Student Senate Constitution that began development in two thousand and eighteen. Alongside our trustee mentors and our Senate staff advisors, we're currently looking into how to kind of navigate this and move forward with it. Additionally, Trustee Rogera and I also a few hours ago met with Communications Officer Jason Meisner regarding the filming of our student trustee introduction video. As we come out of the pandemic and we become more connected in person, we're looking forward to filming parts of this video in Trustee Rogero and I's respective high schools, which is going to be really cool because that's a very different approach from past videos that were filmed. And it's also a great opportunity to remind students once again how connected student trustees are to them. They are quite literally from the same student community that they are. And we look forward to the resulting video that will hopefully be finished in the coming months. Alongside discussing this introduction video, we are also hoping to have an opportunity this school year to update the Student Senate video that was first filmed around five years ago. Though this is going to be a pretty tight process, we hope that because Senate has changed so much, we want to update this information as soon as we can and hopefully next year's student trustees and Student Senate will be able to use it to spread more awareness about the work that Senate is doing. But we hope to at least start this process by the end of this school year.
Before Trustee Wang and I close off our report, on behalf of the past, present, and future students of the HDSB, we would like to extend our gratitude for the commitments this board has made to the students, past and present, over the past four years. This board has seen its handful of student trustees with their own ideas, projects, and visions to forward student voice in our board, and all of them have been graciously welcomed by the trustees that sit around beside me. They've always provided constant support with our role to the tens of thousands of students we represent, and we are so honored to be a part of the HDSB that has been continuing to commit to student voice and prioritize it on topics big and small. We would like to thank the trustees of this board and the trust that they have put into the student trustees, and we can't wait to see what's forward in the next chapter of their careers.
And adding on to that, you all warmly welcomed us in August when we first stepped into our roles, and we can't thank you enough for that. Many of you have continuously supported us throughout these past three months. As student trustees and as students, we've learned so much from each and every one of you, whether it was through listening to what you had to say at meetings or from the resources or knowledge that you made us aware of, whether it was through conversations or through emails. We only got to know a lot of you for only a few months, and it's truly bittersweet to say goodbye to a few of you, but we know that your impact will stick with us and the HDSB students for a very, very long time. On this note, we look forward to also meeting the next Board of Trustees in the coming weeks and continuing our work of advancing student perspectives, engaging in dialogue, and improving the student experience within the HDSB. On a more personal note, because I may not be present for the full meeting next week, I would like to thank Trustee Reynolds for the endless support and guidance she provided us as a trustee mentor and as a person. Despite only working with her for a few months, she has enabled me to grow so much. I have learned endless amounts of knowledge from her, whether it was about the HDSB or whether it was about how to carry out kind of my own character and how to just grow as a person. I look up to her leadership and her values and how her work as a trustee has positively impacted thousands of people. While she may not be returning next term, I have full confidence that she will continue to achieve great things and continue advocating for youth. Thank you so much, Trustee Reynolds, for all your support, and I can't wait to see where the future takes you.
As this chapter comes to a close, we thank you for listening to our report, and as always, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for our student trustees? So my one question is, with the video that you are producing, will we get to have a sneak peek before it goes live?
So hopefully, yes. We're super excited to be working with the Communications Department. It's definitely been a work in progress to ensure that the students of this board know who we are as student trustees and can reach out to us when it comes to issues impacting students. So yes, definitely, hopefully you can get to see that early draft and maybe a little blooper reel because it's not always a perfect run, but definitely, yeah.
Wonderful, and thank you so much again for your heartfelt gratitude and wonderful report. Thank you very much. Okay. We have no delegations this evening, but we do have a presentation of sorts. Tonight, we say see ya, not goodbye, to four amazing women who are not returning to the table next year. Vice Chair Tracy L. Harrison, Trustee Heather Garrett, Trustee Andre Grabent, Trustee Leah Reynolds. Vice Chair Tracy L. Harrison, trustee Heather Garretts, trustee Andrea Grabants, trustee Leah Reynolds. And I'm going to start by thanking you all for getting us to where we are today. Andrea, as a chair for four years, you allowed us to see how to get things done. Your strong voice steered the board through some difficult times, and the mentorship you have shown me has been invaluable. Thank you. Heather. My fellow 2014 newbie. 2018, 2018, sorry. It feels like 2014. You have always been there with a listening ear for those who needed it, to give your honest opinion on things that may have gone right and wrong, and hopefully, you were able to begin as you plan to end. Thank you. Leah. Your insights and spidey sense have always been able to help me navigate and be the navigator for others. Thank you. And Tracy. You have been my training wheels for this past year. And I have to say, it's always scary to ride on your bike on your own without those stabilizers, regardless of the role that you're in. Thank you for listening to all of us, for giving the board wonderful words of wisdom, and providing that secret sauce that helped make this past year, along with the previous three, so exciting. Thank you to you all. We do have a couple little mementos for you all to take with you on your journey on to the next steps in your wonderful lives. And while I'm passing them out, I'm going to open the floor to see if anybody else has anything they would like to say. Trustee Amos.
Thank you. As some of you know, I've been a trustee since 2000. And I've seen many things over the many years I've been a trustee. And some of them really good and some of them really bad. But I've got to say, the really good has been the last eight years. When I became the chair nine years ago, because I wanted to try and get this board back focusing on students and making sure that we all work towards the same goals together. And then, eight years ago, we were all women. We had a board of all women, and I believe it was the first board in Canada or at least Ontario that was ever had been all women. And that was a phenomenal board. Then, four years ago, we became an even better board with the trustees that have come here. And we've always been focused on what's doing the best for students. Now we're reaching another chapter, and I have to, and I'll talk about the people who are leaving in a minute. But just so you know, the four who are leaving, you have done such a great job focusing on what is best for students, staff, and the community. And you will leave big footprints for those who are coming to fill. So again, it was another all-female board. So we are going to have some changes. And it is going to be an adventure to continue on, to try and continue on the great things that have been happening. After I was chair, Andrea stepped up and continued doing fantastic things to this board with Tracy as her vice chair. And you guys, you continued the journey and you've done such great things for this board, and you kept us all together and helped us try to keep focusing on doing the best we could. Leah. Margot sort of talked about your spidey sense, and it has come invaluable over the years. And looking at things sometimes from a different perspective has really kept us all on track. And so thank you for bringing that to the board. Thank you for all you have done for everyone, and we will miss you. Heather, I've only just got to know you. And we just really in the last year got to know each other. And I really hope that we will continue
Oh, yeah.
knowing each other. But thank you for everything you have done because you again brought a different perspective that helped us look at issues and things that were really invaluable to us helping do the great things we've done at the board. So I just want to say thank you to everyone, but especially to the four who are leaving for everything that you have done, for everything for the Hall and District School Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Amos. I drank something that you drank tonight, too, that makes that stuff come out of your eyes. I know. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through your chair. If I may, I will perhaps wrap up on behalf of my trustee colleagues. So dear Andrea, Heather, Leah, and Tracy, as you retire from your position of trustee, we want to thank you for your years of dedicated service and commitment to the students and staff of the HDSB. You put your heart and soul into your role. Your contributions will have a lasting impact and will resonate infinitely throughout the system. We thank you for your friendship and your camaraderie during these years. You will be missed, and we wish you all the very best. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Okay. We're now up to items 3.0 and 4.0, Consent Agenda Items for Approval and Information, which include for approval, item 3.1, the Hall and District School Board Minutes from November the 2nd, and for information, item 4.1, the Order Paper, item 4.2, the Annual Statement of Education Development Charges, item 4.3, a summary of school-generated funds, and item 4.4, the 2021-2022 Summary of Trustee Expenses. I'm going to put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Hall and District School Board approve the Consent Agenda Items and receive the Information Items for November the 9th, 2022. Trustee Gray, would you like to make a motion to deal with the Consent Agenda Items?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Garretts, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, I would. Thanks.
Wonderful. Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion? All right. Seeing none, are there any objections to approving the Consent Agenda for Approval and Information? And again, seeing none, that passes with unanimous consent by, or sorry, passes with unanimous consent. Period. We are now up to item 5.0, Ratification and Action Items for this evening. First off, for item 5.1, we have ratification for business transacted in private session. Vice Chair L. Harrison, do we have any business from private session that require approval?
No, we don't.
All right. Thank you very much. We are now up to item 5.2, which is Items for Action on November the 9th, 2022. First up is item 5.2.1, Financial Statements and Accumulated Surplus Balance Report Number Report Number 22145. So Superintendent Coy, would you like to speak to this first, and then I'll put the motion on the floor after the presentation?
Thank you. The financials seem to have this effect on folks. And good evening and for the chair to all trustees. We are happy to present the audited financial statements for the year ending August 31st, 2022. And online, I do have some of my team. General Manager Jay Chantavong, I believe manager Clayton and manager Camastro are also here in case there's some questions. And I wanted to just take a moment to thank my team, as well as all the collaborating departments that have put a lot of effort into this since returning from summer break. It's been something that we've turned around faster than we usually do and a lot of emerging issues. So I wanted to thank our staff for all of their work in preparing everything for the auditors and completing everything on time. And thank you, manager Coriel, for putting the presentation up. I'll walk you through a few slides that summarize the financial statements. And I wanted to point out a few things as we go along. I'm happy to answer any questions throughout the presentation or at the end as well. So if we can go to the next slide. As you know, the financial results at the end of the year are the actual financial position for the board. So they represent the actual revenues that we've received and the expenses or the costs that we've incurred. They are in line with our multi-year plan. So we are fiscally responsible, but at the same time, we have a clear focus on providing the system with the resources and supports necessary to create learning conditions for student achievement, a safe and caring environment, promote knowledge and understanding of indigenous perspectives, as well as opportunities to take action for environmental sustainability. So I just wanted to mention that the consolidated financial statements are reflected the proportional consolidation of the Hall and District Transportation Consortium, which we are a member with, together with the Terminus Board. And just quickly, the Fast Track or the Community Center for Skill Development has been consolidated previously but has been since removed from the financial statements. And the next slide. So the financial statements are compared to the prior year as well as the original budget. So when we're looking from a prior year perspective, I wanted to draw to your attention that we do have an increase in enrollment of about 790 students, almost entirely in the secondary panel. And through the year, that increase in enrollment also increased various allocations within the grants for student needs. So that is reflected in our revenues as well as on the cost side. It's reflected in additional staffing and resource costs that we've added through the year. There's also a higher cash balance as a result of a sale of the property that occurred in year and short-term financing on capital projects. If we go to the next slide, please. The financial statements are presented and developed in accordance with the Public Sector Accounting Board standards as well as the Financial Administration Act under the Ministry of Education. So you will note that in Note 1 of Financial Statements, it lists the accounting policies that we must follow and that we are auditing on. And our auditors, Deloitte, have issued an opinion, and I think we can go to the next slide. They've issued a clean opinion that our financial statements are reflecting in all material aspects in accordance with the the standards, the Public Accounting Standards Board, as well as in accordance with the Canadian generally accepted auditing standards that they have been auditing on. Management's responsibility is to prepare the financial statements and keep a track from a reporting perspective as well as provide open access to our records for auditors to be able to perform their duties. And I'll walk you through quickly on some highlights on the actual statements. We can go one more. So the first one is the consolidated statement of financial position or the balance sheet that outlines the board's financial assets and liabilities at the end of August. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things here. As I mentioned earlier, the cash balance compared to the prior year is higher as a result of payments received on short-term financing for capital projects as well as the sale of Lake Shore Woods property that occurred through the year. We do have an improved rate from our financial institution that was offered to us during the year as well. With regards to investments, I just wanted to draw your attention to the temporary investments portfolio in a GIC that is for $25 million, and it's composed of four tranches that are coming due every six months. And as they are coming due, we are reconsidering whether or not they are required from a cash flow perspective or they're able to be locked in a term deposit. You'll know that we are under the Education Act quite restricted in terms of what we would invest. So it would be just term deposits and GICs that we would be looking at in terms of maximizing our interest revenue. Accounts receivable is higher than the prior year, and it's as a result of a change in the delayed grant payment, while the accounts receivable from the Government of Ontario is quite significantly lower than the prior year. And that's as a result of a decrease in that delayed grant payment that I mentioned before, but also a decrease in the capital grants receivable. Assets held for sale in the two years reflect the pending sale of the former Robert Bateman High School that at the end of the year was still on the books and has been since sold and closed on October 28th. And in the prior year, the assets held for sale reflected the value of the Lake Shore Woods property, the book value that is. Still on the same one. Just looking through some of the main areas to highlight. The deferred revenue is increased by about $26.8 million, and that's as a result of the proceeds of disposition of that sale. So it's all linked within the accounts. So next slide. The consolidated statement of operations or the income statement reflects the revenues and expenses incurred in year as well as the in-year surplus or deficit for the board. And this statement is compared to budget, the original budget that the board passed in June, and the prior year results as well. So just a couple of highlights. I won't go through the details. But when we compare to the original budget, we've ended the year quite close to that. We have about 210 less enrollment, and they are in the secondary panel. So we actually had a slight decrease in enrollment over what we projected. Revenues did go up, however, as a result of the transportation grant and fuel escalator, the qualification and experience grant, as well as additional one-time grants, the Priorities and Partnership Funds, or PPFs, that have been announced through the year, and the collection of education development charge levies. Expenses are higher than budget overall as a result of increase in supply costs, increase in the Workplace Safety and Insurance Board, temporary accommodations, and they're offset with some savings as it relates to consumables and supplies, professional development, and utilities. And as we compare to the prior year, as I mentioned before, we do see an increase in enrollment of about 798. As trustees will recall, during the pandemic, we've seen a very much decrease in the growth that we've seen in the region. And now we are seeing a little bit more of a return of those early grades as well as we see that big grade eight that move into the secondary panel. So we see a growth in that area. The revenue as a result has gone up. As you know, enrollment is the main driver of our revenue. So therefore, with increase in enrollment, all the allocations have increased proportionately. The school-generated funds, you'll see there's quite a significant uptake again that last year we were able to do some activities and fundraising. And the deferred capital contribution has significantly increased as we're opening new schools and we amortize them. There is a deferred capital contribution on the revenue side that offsets the amortization of those tangible capital assets. Expenses have gone up as well as a result of the additional staffing to address enrollment growth. Transportation increases, temporary accommodations, as well as the school-generated funds expenses. Transportation increases, temporary accommodations, as well as the school-generated funds expenses. I won't go through some of the other ones. The statement of cash flow is outlining our operating capital and financial transactions that involve cash and cash equivalents. On the next slide, it's just an update on the statement of net debt, which reflect more the acquisition of tangible capital assets and other non-financial assets such as prepaid expenses. And a few notes that I wanted to draw your attention to. There's a couple of new notes in our financial statements. They are as a result of the ministry's illustrative template that take into account recommendations for the value-for-money audit of the Auditor General of Ontario. And so we have a couple of notes that result from that, as well as the investment note two is a new note as a result of the GIC that we've entered in during the year. And Note 13 is the requirement to break down the grants for student needs or the provincial allocation between the proportion from the ministry and the proportion of the education property taxes. There's a couple of, Note 25, future accounting standards adoption, and that we are working through. Asset retirement obligation is one of the significant ones that will have an impact on the board. So we're already working with the ministry, with the Facilities Department, and our auditors on assessing what our future obligations are for that liability. Next slide. The Audit Committee's mandate is to review in more detail the financial statements, discuss the auditor's reports, and that took place yesterday at the Audit Committee meeting in public session. As a result of their review and assessment, the Audit Committee does recommend to the board for approval the audited financial statements that are in your package. And the second motion in today's report is for trustees to also approve the allocation of transfers and changes within the accumulated surplus. The board does have a sustainable financial position in terms of accumulated surplus, and the trustees gave us the instruction to purposely use some of that surplus in year to support the multi-year plan, which we have done. And that also means that in year, we have a deficit position. Overall, the accumulated surplus is still a significant one, but in year, we have $3.5 million operating deficit. Within compliance, which is the ministry's calculation, it allows us to use up to 1% of our provincial allocation. For last year, that was around $7.3 million, I believe. So based on the year-end, we have $6.7 million within compliance. So we're all within that compliance. And being within compliance means having a deficit of up to that 1%. The change between budget, the approved budget, and the financial statements is the allocation of $1.5 million towards the sixth classroom addition at the Rattlesnake Point. As you'll recall, that was approved in year by trustees and by the Ministry of Education. It is reflected in our year-end results. If we took that aside, we are within $200,000 of the budgeted amount. Having said that, some expenses are higher, some expenses had some savings, but overall, we did end the year quite close to the approved budget. And I cannot read that, but I do have it in memory, and I apologize. I know in your package it's a little bit bigger. So this shows you the opening balance for the year, the proposed transfers for board approval, the in-year increase or decrease in various appropriated, internally appropriated or non-designated surplus. The bottom half is the surplus that is outside compliance, so that's more of a regulatory surplus for employee future benefits and land. And what I wanted to draw your attention in terms of your approval for this evening is with regards to transfers of $2 million back into the Student Achievement and Multi-Year Plan Reserve. So that is the part of funds that we are using year after year on one-time initiatives to support the multi-year plan, above and beyond what we are able to do so through the annual revenues. And $2 million in the administrative facility, which is the result of underspending in the board administration and governance allocation. And with that, if we go to the next one, I believe, those are just the two recommendations for the board that the Chair Shadwell will put on the floor and will be posting everything on the website once approved. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to put the motion on the floor and then open for discussion. So be it resolved that the Halton District School Board authorize the 2021-2022 year-end deficit of $3,514,773 to be funded from the accumulated surplus category for non-designated surplus. Be it resolved that Halton District School Board authorizes the reallocation of accumulated surplus of $4 million to be transferred from the accumulated surplus category for non-designated surplus to the various accumulated surplus categories as outlined in Appendix A, including a transfer of $2 million to the Student Achievement Reserve and a transfer of $2 million to the Administrative Facility Reserve Fund. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the audited financial statement for the fiscal year ending or ended on August 31st, 2022. Trustee Gray, would you like to move that motion, please?
Yes, I would, thank you.
And Trustee Collard, would you like to second that?
Yes, thank you, I would.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or debate from the trustees?
Vice Taryll Harrison. Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. It's no small feat to get that close to budget, I think, with all of the different variables, particularly in the last little while. So congratulations to you and your team. I see Jays on the line and to one and all. My question is, with respect to accounts receivable, on page nine and 10, from the Government of Ontario, the provincial legislative grants show a decrease year over year. And is this due to enrollment? Is this due to enrollment or why is that? So which page was it on? Just. Nine and 10? Was it, were there delayed grant payments, for example, or decreases in capital grants?
So the provincial grants for year-to-year or budget-to?
Year-to-year.
So year-to-year, they have gone up, and they've gone up as a result of the increase in enrollment. There's also increases for the other allocations, such as fuel escalator for transportation, for example. We've got some additional grants for temporary accommodation. The provincial grants other, at budget time, we only had knowledge of what was announced, and then through the year, we got additional ones, and that particularly pertain to the COVID additional funding that was received, as well as in-kind PPE that was provided to schools and school boards. So that, those are about $12 million. They're also captured in there, and it would be after the budget is passed.
Thank you. See none? If you can all... Oh. Trustee Collard, do you have a question?
I'm voting.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, if everybody can please cast their votes, thank you. And Trustee Collard, your vote has been noticed. Thank you very much, and that carries unanimously. All right, that brings us up to item 5.2.2, Approval of Trustee Expenses, Schedule 1, Report Number 22138. Superintendent Shaw and Director Ennis.
Thank you, Chair Shadwell. Superintendent Shaw will speak to this.
Right. Good evening, through the chair, to trustees. So again, before you, we have Schedule 1, the approval of trustee expenses. We've not made any changes to the lines for home internet and so on. We did make a bit of a revision for... Actually, I don't see it here. The revision for rural areas, is this supposed to be on here?
Point of order, it's under point note one on the...
Was it there?
Yeah, it's on, at the bottom.
Okay. Okay, so we did, there was a question about rural service, and so we've taken that into account for consideration. We'll find what service works best and, right? And you'll see there are the different devices that are available and the reimbursement announced. So pretty straightforward if there are any questions.
All right, thank you very much. I'll read the motion and then open the floor. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board, Board of Trustees, approve the trustee expenses, Schedule 1, appended to Report 22138. Trustee Amos, would you like to move that?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Rocha, would you like to second that?
I would.
Thank you very much. All right, see none? If you can please cast your votes, thank you. Thank you very much, and that passes unanimously. All right, that brings us up to item 5.2.3, Indigenous Education Policy, Report Number 22139. Superintendent Petco and again Director Ennis.
Thank you so much, Chair Shadwell. I'll ask Superintendent Petco to speak to this item.
Good evening, through Chair Shadwell, to all trustees. This evening, there are two policies that we are bringing back after legal review. The first one is the Indigenous policy. And before I share just very briefly what the change has been, just wanted to say that we reached out again to our collaborators and our Indigenous partners to ensure that they were okay with the change. So there were no substantive changes to the Indigenous policy, save for one line, 3.2, which they wanted to remove. And that was a line that said that Indigenous people, staff, and students shall not be subject to any actions with the aim or effect of depriving them of their distinct rights. And the reason being is, one, the policy does not define distinct rights, and secondly, there may be occasions where part of the distinct rights or perceived distinct rights may be in conflict with any statutory obligations of the board. So therefore, that was removed and again confirmed with our Indigenous partners. So we're seeking approval of this revised draft.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the First Nation May T self-identification policy be rescinded and that the Indigenous education policy, as appended to Report 22139, be adopted by the Halton District School Board. Trustee Danielle Lee, would you like to move that?
Thank you, yes, I would.
And Trustee Reynolds, would you like to second that?
Thank you very much, yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or debate from the floor? All right, see none? If you can please cast your votes, thank you, Trustee Collard. Again, thank you very much, and that passes unanimously. And that brings us up to item 5.2.4, the Equity and Inclusive Education Policy, Report Number 22140. Again, Superintendent Petco, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So there were no sections or concepts that were added to the draft, but there were some statements that were modified or eliminated if they were not supported in law or if there was some potential liability that was, that may arise. So Legal has reviewed it and made some changes. Some of those changes are rooted in some principles that were shared in a document and a memo from Legal, sharing the rationale for those changes. So hopefully, trustees, you've all had a chance to look at them. Perfect. So very briefly, any language in the document that might be interpreted as committing to undefined goals, as committing to achieving undefined goals, were removed or replaced. And then, secondly, any terms or definitions that were sitting in the appendices or attachments, Legal felt that it should be in the body of the text as opposed to sitting outside of it. So those were some of the changes that were made, the details you can see in the memo or in the marked-up version that, thank you, Jean, you sent to everyone. So I will not review them in detail. I don't think it's necessary to do that. But again, we have vetted it through collaborators, and we seek your approval for it. Thank you.
All right, I'll read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board, Board of Trustees, adopt the revised Equity and Inclusive Education Policy, as appended to Report 22140. Trustee Garrett, would you like to move?
Yes, I would, thank you.
And Trustee Oliver, would you like to second?
I'll second.
Thank you so much. Is there any debate or question? Trustee Collard.
Thank you, yes. Under the Cross-References Legislation, it says Human Rights Code. I would like to know which Human Rights Code.
I'm, you know what? I don't know how to answer that. Jean, I'm wondering if you can help with that?
Thank you, Superintendent Petco and through the chair. It refers to the Ontario Human Rights Code.
Were you referring?
Thank you. Could we amend the policy to include the word Ontario?
Sure, okay. Because there is only one, so I just wondered what other Human Rights Code you were referring to. So thank you. Yeah.
There's a Canada one.
But we, but the, I think in terms of, I won't go any further.
Okay.
It's the Ontario Human Rights.
Vice Taryll Harrison.
Yes, one second here. Thank you very much. And through you, Madam Chair, the question is, what prompted this update? And what is the usual timing for changes? It looks to me like it's on a three-year cycle. Yes?
Yes.
And this one looks to be like it was long overdue, is that?
It was long overdue.
Is that correct? So, sorry, I shouldn't be answering the question. I just, please, go ahead.
Apologies. Through you, Chair Shadwell, to you, Vice Chair L. Harrison. Yes, it was long overdue, review of the policy, and so it was done through my predecessor, Robby Toth, and here we are.
Thank you very much. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much, through the chair. I want to thank Manager Corillo for...
I want to thank Manager Carrillo for sharing the, I guess, the rough, if you would, the, all of the red lines and the changes that were proposed on this document. It concerns me that there were so many changes. And is this a result of a document that was well overdue for revision? Or is it a result of the laws having changed? Or is it a result of just a finer, a finer inspection of this document as it exists in our board?
That's a really good question.
If I may, through the Chair. Certainly, as we know, that equity and inclusion is an ever-evolving, you know, field. And so, as we know more and learn more, we change things to reflect the current practices, the current language, and the current, you know, code adherent, you know, practices that would support all of our students, staff, and community. You know, so I think that's the spirit within which, you know, it's just the fast-evolving nature of equity and inclusion to reflect current practices.
Follow-up, please? So, are we to take that most of the changes that were required to this document were of a legal nature?
Thank you. Through you Chair Shuttlesworth. Yes, yes. And that's, so there wasn't anything substantive in there that changes the, the spirit of or what was intended by, by the policy? But yes, again, anything that would come up as a liability, right? That legal saw potential liabilities, that's what was changed. And so, nothing, nothing, nothing that would be substantive in that way. Hope that answers. Thank you.
I have one question. So, you spoke of the consultation with other parties in looking at this document. Can I get an idea of what parties you were consulting with?
Sure. For the equity policy only or the indigenous policy?
Go for the both, thank you very much.
Sorry? For both, thank you. Yes, so for the indigenous policy, we always consult, one, with our equity or indigenous department, but also with Nancy Rowe, our treaty partner, and Mrs. Augas of the Credit Advisor Consultant. So, in that respect, for indigenous policy. And then, for the equity policy is our department as well. We have system principals and IPLs that also were involved in reviewing it. So, and then, of course, myself. And then, we also have Perdeep, who is also our human rights advisor, who had eyes on the document as well. So, yeah. Okay.
And so, follow-up. So, with the equity and inclusion policy, that sounds like a lot of staff. Were there any sort of community partners? I know we have an equity and inclusion board. So, was there anything as far as sort of the community partners that were involved as well?
I believe that that was done with the initial draft of the policy. I must admit, we didn't go to community partners for these revisions. Again, we went to legal, and again, because it was, the changes were not substantive in spirit, and they were only related to potential liability or language used, or where terms and definitions might sit in the policy. We did not go to community partners for that.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any further questions or debate? And I'm just going to read the motion one more time. "Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board, Board of Trustees, adopt the revised equity and inclusion education policy as appended to Report 22140, as amended." And see no further questions, can we please cast? Oh, 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 one, sorry, sorry, hold on. Just carding it. Yes. Next topic. Topic. There we go. Sorry, if everybody could cast their vote, please. Thank you trustee Collard. Thank you very much, and that passes unanimously. Okay, we are now up to item 6.0, Communication to the Board. I... 5.2.5, wait. Thank you so much. Where is that gone? I'm so sorry, everyone. Item 5.2.5, Filling a Trustee Vacancy Governance Procedure. Trustee Collard and trustee Rocha. Trustee Collard, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I would. This is the second time coming back to trustees. And there were a few changes due to legal review, and those have been incorporated by Manager Carrillo. So, it is now before trustees for adoption, and I am happy to move that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, I'll read the motion and then ask for that movement. "Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board, Board of Trustees, adopt the Filling a Trustee Vacancy Governance Procedure as appended to Report 22141." Trustee Collard, would you like to move that? She said yes already. And trustee Rocha, would you like to second that?
I would, thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions or debate on this topic, please? See none. If you can please cast your votes. Thank you trustee Collard. Thank you so much, and that again carries unanimously. We are now up to item 6.0, Communication to the Board. We start with item 6.1 for action for November the 9th, 2022. Item... 6.2, Information Reports. So, item 6.2.1, Dress Code Considerations, Report Number 22147. Superintendent Taha and Director Ennis.
Thank you so much. I'll turn this over to Superintendent Taha.
Good evening, Madam Chair, trustees, Director Ennis, senior team. Before you, for information, is a report that is pursuant to a motion that you had passed in September 2022, September 21st, 2022, where the Board of Trustees, the Board of Trustees requested that Director Ennis bring forward for information, factors that we ought to consider as an organization if we are to implement address code, and whether that's advisable or not. I won't read the motion, as it is in the report. I will go over the key elements of this analysis, and I will provide some rationale as to why the two key areas of consideration were informing this report. And I will conclude with some concluding remarks. And obviously, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions. So, the, as articulated in the report, there are two key areas of considerations. And they're both very legal in nature, very employment-related in nature. And I will tell you why that is. The first area of consideration is whether the imposition of a staff dress code would be permissible from a labor and employment law perspective. So, that's one area that we need to consider. And the other area that we need to consider is obviously, because everything we do engages the human rights code, be it in the classroom or in, in the workplace. And that is whether such a dress code standard or a policy or procedure would raise concerns in relation to the board's obligations under the human rights code. So, the reason those two areas of consideration are informing and guiding this report very heavily is because when an employer implements a policy, a procedure, a guideline, essentially, you're implementing a workplace rule. Every workplace on the planet has rules. And those rules guide the employment relationship between the employer and the employee. So, when you're considering a workplace rule, which is an operational matter, I want to be clear about that. It's the, the dress code of an employee is an everyday operational matter, and it's within the purview of, not trustees, but within the purview of the senior team. So, when you're considering a dress code or a workplace rule, you ought to consider those two employment-related pieces, and obviously, the human rights code. So, that's why those two key considerations are informing this analysis, because ultimately, we're talking about a rule in the workplace that says you ought to look a certain way, or dress a certain way, or present yourself in a certain way. Also, important to note is that, obviously, the employment relationship between the employer, the Halton District School Board, and the, and its employees, 10,000 employees, is governed by a host of policies, procedures, regulatory regime, collective agreements, regulatory bodies. It's a very complicated and multi-layered legal landscape. With that said, as you know, our collective agreements have expired. They expired on August 31st, 2022. How do I forget? And so, even if we are to say, you know what, implementing a dress code standard, or grooming standard, or any workplace rule for that matter, is a good idea, we can't do that at this point, because we are under something called the statutory freeze. In other words, until new collective agreements are reached, you are living by the old rules. The old rules are frozen in time, because you, you cannot engage in, in implementing a new rule until that collective bargaining exercise has happened and concluded. So, this is why, even if we are to consider a workplace rule in that, in that sense, we can't do so for that particular technicality. So, I said earlier that the imposition of such a thing ought to consider two things, and that is employment law and our contractual obligations and the human rights code. So, how do we go through that analysis? There's no, there's no debate here that any employer has the right to implement a workplace rule. It's part of management's rights. And so, the first test of whether we can implement this kind of a rule, and I highlighted the, the three steps or phases, or the three-step test that we ought to go through. Actually, it's a five, five-step test, but it's, I will, I will leave it to the three substantive pieces. And that is, does the policy that you, or the workplace rule, I will continue to say it's a workplace rule, is it consistent with the collective agreements? So, we look at our collective agreements. There's nothing in our collective agreements that prevents us from implementing a workplace rule. There's no, there's no provision that says, only with mutual agreement, the board and the union ought to implement a workplace, a workplace rule or a dress code. So, nothing in that collective agreement, notwithstanding the statutory freeze, prevents us from doing so. However, there's no positive obligation that we do so. Nothing compels us in law, in the collective agreement, that says employer, you have to have that rule. So, it's really, we have discretion, is really what I'm trying to say. So, that's step one. If I am to implement such a rule, I will have to go through a careful examination of collective agreement, and among other things, and to see if there's anything in there that prevents me from doing so. And there's nothing that would prevent the board, as the employer, from doing that. The second step that we have to engage in, in terms of analysis, is the reasonability. So, if I'm enforcing a rule, or creating a rule, or altering a rule, is what I'm doing reasonable? Is implementing a rule to, to wear a uniform, or to look a certain way, or to be appearing in a certain way, a reasonable thing to ask our employees to do? We ask our employees, for instance, in our bargaining unit, the maintenance and custodial staff, to wear uniforms. Is that a reasonable rule? Why did we implement that rule? Is there a rationale behind it? Of course, that rule has to, again, satisfy that multi-step test that I just pointed out. So, when we talk about reasonability, reasonability is a very complicated thing to unpack. But for the purpose of today, it's about balancing the importance of this rule. So, if we say implementing a dress code or a, a grooming standard is extremely important to our organization, and we have rationale, the onus of proof is on us, that it is very important. It's subjective, empirical in nature. We implement this rule because we say there's promise for health and safety. Or we implement this rule because we say, well, this is important because we deliver services that hinge, hinge on that rule. So, the burden of proof is on us to establish that. But even if we did so, we cannot establish that rule at the expense of rules that exist at the core of the human rights code, and that is the individual rule. So, our interest, our desire to establish that rule is actually peripheral to the core piece of reasonability, and that is the human rights code. And I will read from the report. "In assessing whether an employer's dress code, sorry, dress and grooming standards are reasonable, arbitrators will often engage in a balancing of the employer's legitimate business interests with employees' interests in personal expression." The employer bears, bears that burden in these cases to establish that the employees' appearances pose a real threat to its business, that it's, it's more, that is more important than the rights of the employee. And that is the burden of proof on us to establish that if we are to consider a dress code. To say nothing about the ambiguity and the clarity, sorry, the lack of ambiguity and the clarity, cogently clear what the rule says to the employee. Otherwise, it's not enforceable. Lastly, and this should come no shock to anyone as I speak about the human rights code, is that we must ensure that the dress code, and the student dress code for that matter, is non-discriminatory in its application, and that it has, and it was implemented in good faith. And that is a very key piece here to consider. Did we implement a rule, be it a dress code or any other rule, in good faith? And we're hearing about good faith a lot these days. "Dress code and grooming requirements, which provide insufficient latitude for employees to comply with religious tendencies and beliefs, or which result in deferential treatment." That's key to, to, to really pay attention to this word. "deferential treatment will generally be found to be discriminatory, and thus, unenforceable." "Policies which impose different grooming standards or dress codes on men and women, or which place additional burdens on members of one gender will quite often be deemed unenforceable." So, that's, you know, the first aspect of what it is that I have to consider as a superintendent of human resources, I, as I consider a workplace rule of any kind. Now, let's talk about the human rights code. So, obviously, the tribunal has acknowledged that, yes, as an employer, you have every right to implement a dress code, and to, and to establish dress and grooming standards for the purpose of professional business, and health and safety reasons, absolutely, no one would debate that. The tribunal likewise has acknowledged that an employer cannot establish standards which, in their application or administration, result, again, in differential treatment on the basis of a protected ground. The tribunal also notes that an employer will have to be prepared to establish that any sex-linked differences, sex as defined under the human rights code, within its dress code, ought to be bona fide occupational requirements. They cannot be arbitrarily, you know, casually implemented. They have to be bona fide and legitimate. That's what bona fide means, legitimate. Occupational requirements, it's part of your job. You can't do that job without that occupational bona fide requirement. Otherwise, they will be more than likely to be found discriminatory. If an employer's dress code and grooming standards place more difficult requirements on female, which we know that dress codes typically do, the burden is disproportionate. The dress codes traditionally have had a far more extreme burden of compliance on women or individuals who identify as individuals of other identities, be it LGBTQ or, or any other identity. The burden of compliance is much more on them than on cisgendered males. So, it is, if an employer's dress code and grooming standards place more difficult requirements on female employees relative to those placed on male employees, myself included, or require female employees to dress in a manner which is more conventional, such standards could form the basis of a discrimination claim under the code. Similarly, it's important to recognize the impact of dress code policy that they have on members of the transgender community. Most notably, it's important for employers to make allowances to ensure that these employees are able to express themselves. So, in closing, again, the board had requested this information from Director Ennis, and we, I've provided you the key highlights of this, of this report. Not to make any rhetorical statements, it's clear from the analysis that the consideration of a dress code places a great deal of liability and exposure to the board. of a dress code places a great deal of liability and exposure to the board, if not done carefully. So that's one lesson, or one takeaway from this. And even if a dress code is implemented for non-discriminatory reasons, if we implement it in good faith, because we thought we had a problem, and we properly diagnosed it, and we said, this is the response to it, it would likely to be found discriminatory, where adversely, which we know it will, affect employees or groups on the basis of their code-protected grounds. Lastly, and this is something I alluded to in my earlier sentence, if we, as a board, as the employer, desire to establish a culture that is professional, that's equitable, that's inclusive, that's safe for everyone, and even if the dress code is that instrument, that policy instrument that we choose to design and implement, is non-discriminatory and reasonable, has met every test that I talked about, I assure you, it will not achieve, or less likely to achieve, its intended purposes. And otherwise, there are other ways to foster a culture of inclusivity, respect, human rights, and safety for everyone, than what I would say, an antiquated instrument. The modern-day organization does not implement dress codes. They are being de-scaled, and as I said, they are disproportionately burdensome, not me, but on women, and members of the other identity communities. With that, have you taken any questions?
Thank you very much, Superintendent Taha. So again, as this is an item for information versus decision, there's no motion associated with it, so I'm just going to open up the floor for discussion and questions from trustees. Trustee Rocha.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, Superintendent Taha, thank you very much for that very detailed report. So what I'm hearing you saying is that, one, to implement a dress code policy is almost, it would fail, and it would be going backwards. All other institutions are removing dress codes, and there's really no need for one here, and if we even try, it wouldn't pass all of the litmus tests that you mentioned. We currently have a student dress code policy, and it's very liberal. Would that be something that could be applied to the staff?
Thank you, Trustee Rocha. Through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Rocha. A couple of things before I answer that. I think it's important to, and I know our student trustees are in the room, it's important to sort of draw a distinction between the relationship that exists between students and the board, and the relationship, which I went through it in great detail, that exists between employees and employers. That's not to say one relationship has more or less privileges, I would argue the opposite. But the relationship that exists between boards and students is one that is enshrined in the Education Act. When we drop off our kids at school, we're essentially placing the board in something called locoparentis, thank you. In other words, it's Latin for "in the place of parents." That's exactly what we're doing. So that is the kind of relationship that exists between the board as locoparentis, standing in the place of parents, and the relationship with students. Now, the relationship that exists between employees and employers is much more complicated and more, I shouldn't say litigious, more legalistic. It's a bargain relationship. You know, the bargain is, you offer me services, and I offer you pay. It's rooted in all sorts of legislative conventions, laws, et cetera, et cetera. So the relationship is entirely different. So, to consolidate the two into one standard of dress code, or standard of conduct, is problematic in a legal sense, because the relationship is different, but also, it's problematic principally, because, again, the spirit of that relationship, we would be missing the point. But I also want to highlight, I know this is a question that had come in the past, I know that the student dress code has existed for quite some time, my colleague, Superintendent Padra Berrick, is well aware of the deliberations and the discussions and the challenges that we've had as we implement a student dress code, and to your point, you said it was a liberal dress code. And as I said, these dress codes ought to be even de-scaled further. But here's what I say. To those who think that the absence of a staff dress code suggests that the staff are not held to the same norms that exist for students, is untrue, because staff are also bound by all sorts of codes of conduct, the regulatory bodies, the employment equity policy, the employee code of conduct, the respect for work policy, the human rights. So we are bound by those pieces of legislation. So the absence of a dress code does not in any way, and I'll say this again, does not in any way, to the extent that there's a violation of a dress code, any potential dress code, the absence of an expressly written policy does not prevent me from saying, you know what, that shirt that you have on is offensive, because it has racial slurs on it. Nothing would stop me from doing that, even the absence of a dress code. So I wanted to draw that distinction. Yes, there is a student dress code, I'm not sure if it's enshrined in law, it may be, hence, that notion of a positive requirement. I don't know if we must have a student dress code, I can't speak to that, but we don't have a positive requirement to have a staff dress code. But the absence of it, again, I will stress again, does not in any way prevent me from saying, you know what, what you have on, you can't have on, if it's a violation of a dress code.
Thank you, Trustee Rocha. Trustee Grabens.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Shuttleworth, to Superintendent Taha. Now, at the beginning of your talk, I just want to make sure I heard it correctly, that dress code is an operational issue. It falls under the operational realm. So it isn't even in the purview of trustees to even contemplate this at the table.
Through you, Trustee Grabens, sorry, through Chair Shuttleworth, to Trustee Grabens. I did speak about what a dress code expressly means. It's a workplace rule. The employer relationship that governs our interactions with our employees is the purview of civil servants, myself included, and Director Ennis. So it's not a matter of governance, no, it's, dress code is everyday operational matters. You are correct.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. In the memo, or report on page two, it speaks to necessity to protect workplace health and safety. And if that's not done through a dress code, could you speak to the other ways that workplace health and safety are not addressed each and every day?
Thank you, Vice Chair Harrison, through Chair Shuttleworth, to you and the rest of the trustees. Obviously, the Occupational Health and Safety Act is an overarching piece of legislation that governs health and safety matters in the workplace. As an employer, as everyone in this room knows, we have to take every reasonable precaution to ensure that the workplace is safe, free from hazards, and hazards are not only physical, they could be psychological, they could be emotional, domestic violence, sexual harassment, you know, it engages the code. So the Occupational Health and Safety Act is a powerful source of authority that we have to ensure health and safety is upheld in the workplace, be it physical health and safety, psychological, and so on. There's all sorts of mechanisms in place, through the Ministry of Labor, through our own Health and Safety Department, through our processes, to enter into any concern in relation to health and safety. There's a joint Health and Safety Committee in every one of our schools that do inspections, and they will, part of their mandate, under the Occupational Health and Safety Act, to identify any occupational health and safety hazards, or health issues in the workplace. And they do so in the ordinary course, and this is no different.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Vice Chair Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Could you just refresh my memory, if you've mentioned it already, just with respect to the key challenges that you see, or that have been enunciated in this memo, with respect to staff dress codes? So I'm imagining there have been legal tests, and so on. Could you just do the Kohl's Notes version again, please? Just the Kohl's Notes version.
Through you, Vice Chair Harrison, to, sorry, through you, Chair Shuttleworth, to you, Vice Chair Harrison. There are plenty of challenges that employers would face when they implement a dress, or consider to implement a dress code. The dress code ought to be compliant with the Human Rights Code. Inherently, dress codes are adversely impacting women and other groups disproportionately. That's one key challenge. The other key challenge is the reasonability of a dress code. Why is it that we see a dress code as a workplace rule, as a reasonable instrument that we implement on our employees? Why is that? And what would it achieve? What is the problem that we're trying to solve? And is a dress code the appropriate response to that problem? And lastly, I talked about the statutory freeze. Even if we wanted to consider a dress code, we can't do so at the moment, until collective agreements have been renewed. So that would be in its most basic form. And there has been many, you know, if you're asking me for case law, you know, there's a case, I don't know how recent it is, but it was in Calgary, a cooperative board of, it's a cooperative, Co-operators Board, versus its bargaining unit. The Cooperative War in Calgary established a dress code that forced staff to tuck in their shirts. The union took that dress code policy, I don't know what the rationale behind it, I'm sure it's well-intentioned. The union took the policy to an arbitrator, and the arbitrator deemed that it's disproportionate for certain individuals, depending on their body shape, or their own gender, that may be problematic, and that may be humiliating to them to tuck in their shirt. And the arbitrator declared it null and void. So it could be that simple of an issue in a dress code that makes it unenforceable.
Are there any further questions, before we move on? Superintendent Taha, thank you so much. I know how much research and time you've put into this, and we really appreciate the full report that you've given us tonight. Okay, we are now up to item 6.2.2, the Reimagine Forward Report Back, report number 22146, Associate Director Salmini. I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you. So through you, Chair Shuttleworth, to all the trustees and staff, I'm pleased tonight to bring this report. As you all know, that trustees initiated an opportunity to invite the community into a consultation process back in May, I believe, or prior to that, but a report came to the board in May, and really looking at positive opportunities in public education. A number of themes emerged through this consultation, and this report that I bring to you this evening is a response to some of the things that are happening, related to those themes that emerge, and some upcoming initiatives that we will implement. So I want to thank the trustees and the Reimagine Forward Committee for that great work. I think that it will serve us as we move through the rest of this multi-year plan, and as we move into starting the planning of our next multi-year plan, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from trustees for Associate Director Salmini? Vice Chair Harrison.
Okay, thank you very much for the report. It is great to see that much of the things in the report that were collected from members of the community with very diverse views are validating of some of the things that are already going on in the system, and that the input is also an impetus to keep evolving, and consider nuances in the future as you move forward. There are some really great things happening, particularly centering students, decolonizing the innovation strategy, the Student Voice Officer, these are some, those last two things were new for me, reading them. So I think that is great, and a great signal of things to come. Supporting vulnerable students, not just in the classroom, but in the whole school, so that they can join clubs, play sports, and follow their passions. So, Reimagine Forward in and of itself was a model that I hope carries forward. Trustees and the senior team worked really closely together. Thank you, Superintendent Padra Berrick, and Associate Director Boge, former Associate Director Boge. We spent many hours together. So I do hope that this partnership, where we tried new things, and invited, and listened to diverse voices, moves forward. I will never forget the online session where students set the record straight, reflecting on their experiences, and making a case for different approaches for learning and assessment, and more leadership opportunities. So, we had, the majority were adults, who were giving their perspectives, and these students that were with us jumped right in and corrected. Not that they represent all students, but that dynamic was great. Centering on students was the reason for doing this, and it's the reason to keep reimagining forward. So I'm grateful for this report, and the fact that you have noted that there is some rich data in there, and I'm super excited to see how some of these new things unfold over time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, through the chair. I was very grateful for this report. I wondered, when I was reading it, the reflection of the initiatives that met the themes that we heard from the groups, were very, it was very impactful. And I was just wondering if we should consider attaching or uploading this report to our Reimagine Forward website, because I think people who had participated and given their feedback would love to read, and hear, and see that their voices are reflected in the work that is happening.
Thank you, absolutely. I think that we can definitely do that. It's a good idea.
Thank you, Trustee Gray.
Thank you, through the chair, to Associate Director Salmini. I wonder, this is such rich information, and I'm so pleased about the powerfulness of the response of the board in looking at some of the comments that have been made by the students, staff, members of the community, as to how we can reimagine going forward in the future of education. But I don't see this as a static step, I see this as an ongoing step. Do you see a similar sort of approach being taken, re-study, maybe four or five years hence, down the road? Because it seems to me that we're in a, we live in a world today that is ever-changing. And I particularly looked at the outdoor education, and all of the information about climate action, and where we're heading. And we know that that's an agenda that is so, so ever-changing, day by day. I just, I see this as something, it's a starting point, it's not an end point, but I totally love all that has been responded to, and the steps that are being taken forward in response to this. So thank you very much. But to my question, do you see this as something that would be replicated maybe in the future?
Thank you for the question, through the chair, to Trustee Gray. I think a perfect time for that would be as we move into developing another multi-year plan, right? That's a few years away, and it could be a similar structure, where we seek public consultation to help inform that process. That's one of the things that I was thinking would be very valuable.
Vice Chair L. Harrison.
Thank you. Apologies for coming on a second time. Through you, Madam Chair. There's a question that has been received, just regarding the Reimagine Report and the themes, and a lack of focus on...
themes and a lack of focus on teaching and learning. And I just would encourage people to go back and read the source documents because there are tons of data in those documents. And Associate Director Salmini, maybe you could also comment on that piece in terms of where, you know, learning and achievement fits in terms of our multi-year plan, big pillar commitments and so on.
Yeah, absolutely. Through the chair to Vice Chair L Harrison. Certainly, this was just a snapshot and, you know, sharing some things that are happening in terms of the themes. Within the report, we highlighted assessment because some of the feedback we got from the consultation was lots of things about assessment. So I highlighted that because it is something that we are really looking at as a board and learning about how we assess for learning and change and evolve our assessment practices. So that's a really big focus for us, so I highlighted that. The other piece was we heard a lot about learning differently. You know, how are we getting at the transferable skills that our kids, our students are going to need as they enter, you know, beyond our school and into post-secondary and into the world? And so we have a commitment in our operational plan to get at the transferable skills as outlined by the Ministry of Education and to develop a strategy for that over the next few years. So that, those are the pieces that we highlighted, but certainly within our operational plan, we have many, you know, initiative strategies, things that are happening to get at learning and achievement. And we will be bringing a report in December on the final for last year's operational plan and we'll see that report come December 7th, I believe, right?
Thank you very much. Any further questions?
All right, Associate Director Salmini, thank you so much for bringing this report back to us. I know how much this report meant to the team. There are a lot of trustees on that team that are not returning to the board, but it really did bring out the best in all of us. It inspired us as trustees to shift our thinking and look at what we could allow the senior team to operationalize the ideas that evolved from a pandemic, which really wasn't the best situation, but looking at how, as always, you can always make lemonade or lemons. It was so wonderful to see how the trustees and the senior team worked together. And from looking at the first steps that you've outlined in this report, it's really wonderful to see how the Halton District School Board is going to continue to reimagine forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And I must tell you, it really was a pleasure to bring this report here this evening. So thank you for all your hard work and the vision that went into preparing this. Thank you.
Okay, we are now up to item 6.3, notices of motion. And I will just check, are there any notices of motion for this evening? See none. We are up to item 6.4, the Director's Report, which has two items tonight, Director Ennis, the MYP or Multi-Year Plan Accomplishments and Recognition, as well as that infamous other. So I'm going to pass the mic over to you.
Thank you so much, Chair Shuttleworth. I'm going to start with the other and I'm going to ask Superintendent Frankovic just to outline a number of things that he wants to bring you up to date on. Thank you.
Thanks, Director, and to all trustees. Just wanted to follow up. Last week, we told you a little bit about Launch 2022 and we reached out to the ministry for some feedback and I just wanted to share an email we received, one of the instructional program leads received from the education officer. So I did attend Launch 2022 and I was amazed. I forwarded the invitation to the entire skills development and apprenticeship branch, including to my manager and director. They were so impressed with the Wednesday event, I was asked to feature it at our large divisional meeting with the Assistant Deputy Minister at the end of that week. I wanted the whole division to see the wonderful work that school boards are doing to support student pathway exploration. The sheer amount of planning and organization that went into this event is astounding and impressive. As a former guidance and pathways board leader, I appreciate the importance of providing students with as many opportunities to explore and learn and ask questions without having them feel self-conscious. Huge kudos to you and your collaborative partners in delivering such an awesome event. And that's from Patty Marino at Education Officer. And this is in response to Launch, which was in partnership with both of the Ottawa school boards involving over 11,000 students. And just want to again highlight the work of the IPLs and how proud they were. And I know Ethan shared last week his attendance at the event and appreciate the feedback from trustees, from our student trustees and from the general public. Director Ennis, did you want me to carry on with the other?
I mean, you didn't, you didn't mention that I was there at launch. I mean, that's the only thing that I'm thinking about.
Last week, we did mention that you were setting the tone for day two.
Please continue.
We also had our IB and iSTEM information evenings. So IB was on October 20th and on November 3rd, we hosted our iSTEM information evening. Great turnout for all those events. IB and iSTEM applications opened on November 4th and closed on December 5th. And we did hear some positive feedback from the event, included the fact that we had interpreters on hand for our families and they found this to be a valuable support. We also have our IRTs, as you know, who we hired with the tutoring funds. Some of the initial data that we've collected, I just wanted to highlight a little bit in math. Primary, at the end of the first cycle, 86% of the students showed moderate to significant growth. In junior, 100% of the students showed moderate growth to significant growth. And in intermediate, it was 38% of the students showing moderate to significant growth. We also have some attitudinal survey data that was presented today and it really highlights the great work our IRTs are doing in the schools. Back in September, I believe it was trustee Collard who asked us to explore some education around coyotes because of increased activity in the Burlington area. And so Rachel Irwin, our outdoor education lead, offered the secret life of coyotes. And we had over 220 classroom requests from our elementary schools for our grade four to six students, including a 45-minute live virtual presentation, 100-minute outdoor program and teacher packages with pre and post activities. And that's our update from school programs.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Frankovic. You know, we didn't, we don't hear from him often, but when he comes, let me tell you. I'm going to ask Superintendent Petco to give us an update on human rights.
Through you, do I say Director Ennis or for Director Ennis? Through you, yeah, through Chair Shuttleworth, excuse me. I'd like to share with all of you that our Human Rights Symposium is happening again this year. As you know, we had one last year and this is actually through the initiative of the Director's Office. So this is funded by Director Ennis as well. This year's symposium will be December 8th and 9th. Save the date. I know some of you are asking, when are we going to hear more? The branding and communication is coming out through Heather Francie's Communication Office very imminently. So just to share with you, in alignment with our multi-year strategic plan and our environmental leadership, this year's theme will be around human rights and climate change and how it is a human right to have a healthy living environment. So we're excited to share that we have two guest speakers. One is Sheila Watt Cloutier, if you, some of you are nodding your head so you know her, an activist, a Nobel Peace nominee, Nobel Peace Prize nominee, actually. And she, so she will be on the 8th and then we will also have a guest speaker on the 9th as well. And the name escapes me right now. It was Basu, Ms. Basu. And she is a human rights activist as well and the founder of Green Hope, I think it was. Sorry, the name escapes me now.
Green Hope Foundation.
Green Hope Foundation. Thank you, Director Ennis. And so she'll be speaking on the night. There will be a virtual event and leading up to these days, we will also be providing some virtual learning opportunities for the system, for educators, students and employees of Halton District School Board to share the wonderful work that's already happening in environmental leadership and awareness and also to give everyone an opportunity again to reemphasize and center our own personal individual calls to action for environmental advocacy and also our collective work in saving Mother Earth. So that's, that's a brief summary of what's to come and we just wanted to make sure that you save the date and then please look out for the flyer and information coming out. It'll all be out on social media. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And just going to move right into the multi-year plan accomplishments and recognition. I want to take this opportunity to say congratulations to all our returning trustees. Congratulations on your election victory. And just want to say to those of you who will not be returning, we want to wish you all the very best. I know that we're going to be working with a new team and you're going to be on to new ventures. So at this time, I'm going to ask Scott if he would take the floor and make recognition to our Vice Chair L Harrison.
Absolutely. You know, through the chair, to all trustees, it's my honor to say a few words about Vice Chair Tracy L Harrison. Our first impressions of Tracy when she started on the Board of Trustees was, oh my goodness, Tracy is the most kind compassionate person on the planet. Here we are eight years later and our impressions of Tracy are, oh my goodness, Tracy is still the most kind and compassionate person on the planet. I've worked for many years with Tracy and she served as a steady presence on the board's discipline committee. Many of you know, these are tricky emotional meetings where keeping the best interests of all students is an absolute necessity. I know the parents, staff and students involved in these meetings always value Tracy's genuine interest and commitment to kids. Tracy, we have appreciated your strategic thinking around public education and how we can make it better. We've all benefited from your heart for kids and how we can better attend to their learning and wellbeing. Being a parent is daunting and challenging at the best of times, but championing the best interests of over 66,000 kids is something most people will never have the honor and challenge to do. You've not only done this, you've done it exceptionally well with grace, class and yes, kindness. On behalf of the senior team, I want to thank you for all of your hard work. I would also like to inform everyone here that November is, we are going to miss Tracy L Harrison Month. Tracy, all the best. We will really truly miss you.
Thank you so much, Scott. And I love that you brought that last piece in. We're going to miss Tracy month. All right, I'm going to ask Jen and Jackie to do the honors for Heather.
Yes, thank you so much, Director Ennis. And Heather, I'm over here. I'm starting off, but I only have a very little bit to share because our time was short. I started here in August of 2022 and I cannot say enough about your guidance and your support and welcoming me to my first role as a superintendent. I think I was most fortunate to have gotten a chance to work with you and I only wish that we'd had an opportunity to work together longer. I want to talk just briefly about the impact I know that you've had on the schools. All of the 10 schools that I support and service speak so highly of the work you've done and the role that you play and they talk about how you are a champion for educators, all educators, and that you really do understand the inner workings of a school environment. And I know they're very excited that, you know, although you might be switching roles, they're very excited to know that you're going to be a part of their lives moving forward and the lives of the students and families in the Milton area. Your impact is long-lasting and I thank you very much for being there for me. And I still have your phone number and I will be keeping that close, Heather, in case I ever need to reach out. And now I'd like to turn it over to my amazing colleague, Jackie, who has had the privilege of working with you longer.
Heather Garrett, she's a force and you don't want to be on the wrong side. Ernest Hemingway did a piece with a six-word story and his word was for sale, baby shoes never worn. If I could touch the emotion like that for Heather, I would say my six-word story on behalf of senior team. Dreams don't work unless you do. And Heather is a worker, unbelievable. She knows what it's like to be in the trenches, not up being served by the queen. She knows what it's like to be an educational assistant, to be bitten and spit on and still come back every day because it's the kids. She knows what it's like to work in it with a team and a family of schools and she does make so many people's dreams come true. I really noticed this when she worked in elementary before becoming a trustee. And when we first toured CK together, Craig Kilburger Secondary School, she went to find the students she had touched in the schools that she had worked with to see how they're doing and knew their families, their parents, and truly was genuinely loved by all. In the dreams of real estate, she's a mongrel, right? You need a real estate phone number? Go get her. But in that, she does not just build homes for people to fill their dreams of owning homes, but she has built Milton as a vibrant community, a great place to live and hence that's why we have so many cottages in our elementary schools and high schools. And both with her teamwork with Donna, they're inseparable in standing firm to ensure that our new schools and our older schools truly meet the dream of kids. As a mom, she made her son's dream come true. She was his coach as a freestyle ski instructor, coach, cheerleader, had the shirt, drive, feed, cheer and coach. And unbelievable, Travis is an Olympian from Milton, the only one thus far. We hope to generate more kids' dreams that way. And now has been inducted into the Hall of Fame in Milton. And it truly wouldn't have been for Heather's persistence on demanding schools, with Collette Ruddock, to make her son's dream come true and other athletes to say, where's flexible, alternative programming before that was even a sexy term as it is today? And she's proud to have him as a partner to make all dreams come true in real estate. Heather also is an astounding volunteer. She makes dreams come true in our schools, particularly as Halton Food for Thought, but in her other schools where I've called her on Saturday nights to say a tragedy's happened in a school, she is right there the next day. She stands side by side with the staff, grieving with them, grieving with the families. If there's a family in need, she pulls out her wallet, she rallies the network behind Milton to ensure that while their dreams might have been burnt in a house or the loss of a child, that they will be supported. And in particularly, her turkey drive that she does every year. Recently, she received the highest award you could as a community volunteer, receiving the Queen Jubilee recognition along with her partner and trustee, Donna Donelli. These two women know how to make a community thrive and particularly for our newcomer population that comes in Milton, there's not a better place to have a welcome center supported by Heather and Donna. As a mom, she does make dreams come true. She has walked in the valley with so many moms in Milton and including this mom here that when my children needed their mom in pretty horrific times, fighting cancer, Heather said, family comes first and I will stand behind you. In COVID, she was amazing. I blind copied her on so many messages about why we're having masks, what the COVID protocol is, how can we help kids? Heather was totally always there to support those difficult, challenging decisions and at the same time. at the same time kept the dream that we will get out of this mess and we will move forward. So Heather, you do make dreams come true for so many of us, and you will continue to do that. I know that. And I know without any doubt, you work harder than anybody else. So dreams don't work unless Garrettts does. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to ask Superintendent Flahat to do the honors for Trustee Grabens.
Thank you very much. I have the honor of saying a few words about Trustee Andrea Grabens. As many of you know, I arrived at the Board last year, new to Halton. I was told I was the first superintendent in about nine years to be part of the senior team, and so everything was new for me. And one of my first conversations with people from the Board was with Andrea. I couldn't believe the kindness, the caring and the knowledge about the inner workings of the schools. She knew every single one of the schools. She knew every principal. She knew families. So many challenges happened throughout the year last year, whether it was around COVID, concerns of parents, the kind approach. And I was so shocked in terms of the level of compassion for students, always students first. Everything was about students, the conversations. And even when people were escalated, you know, sending really challenging emails at times, it was always finding a way to say, how do we help this family? Let me make that phone call. And I was so amazed at the ability of someone that knows the trustee role so well and how she engaged me immediately to support families when there were challenges so that I could step in and help, referring families to parents, navigating the system and knowing who to call and how to get supports. And she was someone that I constantly had phone calls with, tried to keep her informed about everything that was going on in our schools. And quite a few times she would know even before I called because she was so connected to the community. And so it's been an absolute honor to work with you, Andrea. And I wish I had more of an opportunity to learn more about the great things that you have been doing here in this Board. I know that you've done a magnificent job as a chair, and I got the chance to observe that compassion and competence in terms of moving and creating that beautiful culture that we all want to work in, the place of Halton District School Board. And I've had the most amazing time being here at this Board. It's been the most exciting time of my career. This is my 29th year in education, and this is, the last little while has been so amazing. And Andrea, thank you for being such a big part of that for me, and I wish you all the very best. On behalf of the senior team, this is a little something for you. Thank you very much.
And I'm going to ask Superintendent Ruddock to do the honors for Trustee Reynolds.
Absolutely. I'm pleased to share a few remarks about Trustee Reynolds. But to be honest, I haven't worked with Trustee Reynolds for very long in schools. I've been with her at the Board Table for six years, but only a few months in the same family of schools. So I reached out to principals and past superintendents with whom Trustee Reynolds worked with, and boy, did they ever want to share their thoughts and appreciations and well wishes for you. So principals described Trustee Reynolds as a strong supporter of the school and the community. As principals newly assigned to the school, Trustee Reynolds would be one of the first to welcome them and to offer her insights into the community and how she and her role can support the principal and the school. Trustee Reynolds even showcased a new administrator in her ward by way of an introduction through her newsletter, and that was really welcoming. Lastly, principals all said that Trustee Reynolds' approach to any situation was, how can I help? This care and consideration for students and the community is truly appreciated by the schools, and they will miss you. Past family of school superintendent, now retired, also expressed their appreciation for Trustee Reynolds, saying that it wouldn't be unusual to see her volunteering in the schools at their events or serving breakfast or attending student performances and joining school council meetings. Trustee Reynolds is a great advocate for the community, and we saw that in her work in supporting the Burlington Secondary Program and Accommodation Review as a member of the Transition Committee at Burlington Central High School. And a really important piece of her legacy with the Board as a committee member in the exploration of a unique program at Aldershot that is now iSTEM that is spread across our Board. On a personal note, I'd like to say, Trustee Reynolds, that you've shown me warmth and kindness. I've learned and appreciated your perspective on the issues that we've discussed at the Board. I'm sorry that our time in a family of schools was so short, and on behalf of the senior team, we will truly miss you. Thank you.
Thank you to all and to all who recognized our trustees tonight. We're truly grateful for the kind words that you've expressed. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all trustees for their contributions during your past term and your time with us. During your final term and time with us, we built new schools and refurbished and upgraded many. New schools we built and some that we refurbished included Odenau Public School, Boyne Public School, Martin Street Public School, Viola Desmond Public School, Dr. David R. Williams, Elsie McGill, Rattlesnake Point, and upcoming Milton Number 12. These schools, along with others in the pipeline, will continue to serve students and families for decades to come in our very thriving, growing and ever-expanding Board. You were instrumental in creating our current multi-year plan that will be renewed in 2024. This document served as first principles for us as senior team and has been an anchor for everything that we do. You've embodied our foundational principles of adaptability, innovation, engagement, relationships, communications and accountability. To highlight just a few things that have taken effect during your tenure, under learning and achievement, the Halton District School Board has consistently yielded strong academic outcomes from kindergarten through grade 12. We have had the HDSB Emergent Literacy Strategy, which was co-created with Special Education Services Department to support educators, to create reading pilot programs, and we've had tremendous results through that. I won't go through all the things that I've listed in the report as a result of time, but you know, our learning and achievement continues to be strong, continues to be a focus, and we're going to continue as trustee, Chair, Vice Chair L. Harrison mentioned earlier on through the reimagine, we're going to continue to make sure that this continues to be a focal point for us. Through equity and inclusion, we have implemented during your tenure the HDSB Discriminatory and Harmful Language Protocol across all schools. This has really helped us in managing some of the very destructive and harmful language that we know has permeated our society, and it has helped to create and shape the HDSB as a leader. We have provided series on dismantling racism, a learning series that has provided continuous training for our school leaders through our family of school meetings. We've implemented our annual Human Rights Symposium that we heard about earlier on that amplifies our commitment to Human Rights Equity and Action Accountability Plan, The Way Forward. You were a part and instrumental in creating that. We now have a Human Rights and Equity Advisor. You are instrumental in supporting and helping me to make sure we have the right person to do the work. In our Indigenous Perspective and Awareness commitment, we have strengthened and grown our Indigenous staff during your tenure here to build capacity and support the Board. We now have a system principal. We have one IPL, four IRTs, two student support coordinators, one knowledge guide. This is substantially different from when you perhaps started the role. And so this all happened during your tenure. On the mental health and well-being, we have established and communicated a framework for the whole person to be supported. We focus in on building students' cognitive, social, emotional, physical and spiritual competencies and identities. We've had such success with our Well-Being in Action sessions where thousands of staff and students have participated throughout the year. In our environmental leadership, we have created Canada's first climate-ready school ground. This happened under your leadership. We've had green exercise modules. We've created the Climate Symposium that we had thousands of students participating in with our speaker Catherine Hayhoe. And we've had active partnerships with a number of partners right across Halton region, including the Halton Climate Collective, Climate Adaptation Plan, the Oakville Energy Task Force, Halton Hills Active Easy, Eco Schools and many others. Last but not least, during your final term, you also hired a Director of Education. You did a great job to help shape, guide and lead the HDSB forward. That happened under your leadership. Thank you for that. So Tracy, thank you so much for everything that you've done as Vice Chair and all that you've contributed to the Board. You know, one of the things that I'm going to miss is I love your jokes. I loved your sense of humor. Just that piece, you know, my daughter says, you know, billionaires' jokes are always funny. I don't know if you're a billionaire, but your jokes are always funny. And I always found, I always got it. So thank you, Tracy. I'm going to miss that. I'm going to miss you. Heather, thank you so much for everything that you do. It's been clearly stated tonight that you are a champion, that you're an advocate, that you're someone who the community knows that they can call in to support our schools. And just for everything that you do for us and outside of us, to the community at large, thank you. Thank you for everything. Andrea, thank you for, you were the Chair of the Board when I was hired, and so I remember how you made me feel. And so as Maya Angelou said, you know, people may forget what you say, they may forget what you do, but they'll never forget how you made them feel. And I remember how you made me feel when I came in as Director, so thank you. And I want to thank you, Leah. Thank you so much for your continued support of students. Your focus on students was remarkable, and your kind words to me, you know, just encouraging me and saying very uplifting things to me. I know you didn't have to do that, but thank you. Truly, truly appreciated. So on behalf of the entire senior team, we want to say thank you for your time, dedication, sacrifices and commitment to public education during your tenure. Know as you leave that your presence made a positive impact and your absence will be felt. Until we meet again. I think I'm done. And that ends the Director's Report.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Ennis. This evening, there's no communication from me. Are there any committee reports? Seeing none, that brings us up to 6.7 trustee questions and comments. Do any trustees have anything that they would like to say? Trustee Garrettts.
Thank you. Through you to everyone here. I have two comments. One, I went to Elsie McGill for the iSTEM. Wow. People were lined up to half of the other side of Milton to try and get into the parking lot. It was so well-received and well-attended and will never have a problem filling that program ever. I just wish we could put it in every school, honestly. It's fabulous, and it was really great to see that support. The other thing I have to, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it. Turkey Tuesday is coming up. It is, and let me tell you, because there's some folks here that don't know what Turkey Tuesday is, somehow or other, I ended up raising money, I don't know, a number of years ago, I was asked to help and raise money to buy the turkeys that go in the hampers that go with pack-a-bag and every child that's involved in, and they're Halton District School Board kids and Halton District Catholic School Board kids. We started a number of years ago, they only asked me to raise money for 80 turkeys. Okay, we could do that in two hours on social media, no problem. And that was really only Milton, but it has expanded, and over the last few years, the needs are extremely great. I asked the other day how many turkeys I'm going to have to raise money for, and it's up to 500. So I have to come up with $12,500 in a few weeks. And so I started calling it Turkey Tuesday. I always do it right after Black Friday and Cyber Monday, and people e-transfer me 25 bucks a turkey, and we somehow raised enough for 403 last year, but the needs are 500 this year. And I would be also remiss if I didn't mention that some of my colleagues sitting around the center here do help make the deliveries. So we actually deliver them the Saturday before Christmas. This year, it's going to be, it's a little wonky because we're Christmas lands, but we'll be delivering the food baskets on December 17th. So and again, across Halton, they like, Pack-a-Bag likes to use the drivers that I have arranged because A, confidentiality is key, and my friends show up, so they like that. Anyway, so that's coming up, and so if you can spread it out to your friends and neighbors and let them know, and then just you can reach out to me. And if you don't have my private cell number, Jen has it, and most of the, actually, most of the people around here have it. So if you don't, just ask one of them and reach out, and I'd be happy to have you help me or deliver or, you know, if you can find someone that has 25 bucks, that'd be great. Sorry. How do we find these kids, these families? Most of them are already recipients of Halton Food for Kids. And then other organizations also contact us, but that's essentially, it's already our kids in our schools.
Trustee Grabens.
Thank you. Heather signed me up for to be a driver. I just wanted to say that it's been a fabulous eight years. I'm going to miss each and every one of you inside the circle, outside the circle, and those that have gone on to other things. There have been a lot of faces that have come and gone, and every single time, every iteration around the table is a new wonderful stew that is being consumed by the greater, for the greater good. I really personally hope that I've been effective as a trustee, that I've brought leadership to the Board, that I've served the Board in a good way. And all I'd like to go forward is to make sure that A, the system continues on well, and I am sure it will, because I look around the table now and I see incredible talent and dedication. And so I know that things are going to be wonderful going forward. I ask of the trustees going forward, please keep your voice loud. We are the only people elected. We are the only people elected for student achievement and wellbeing. If our voice is not there, I don't know what's going to happen. So please keep standing up. Please keep punching up. Please keep speaking up. Because if we don't do it, no one will. So I wish everyone a wonderful journey going forward because we are all still on our own journeys. And I know I will meet each and every one of you in the future. It's not like we're dying. We're just out and about. You can always reach me. I even, you know, still have a website up with my name all over it. So, and my contact information's there as well. Please reach out. I would love to hear about what's going on in every one of your lives. So take care and be well.
Trustee, Trustee Reynolds?
Okay, so I am very humbled and grateful to have served as a trustee for the Halton District School Board. I have to read this because I'm going to fall apart. Thank you for allowing me to represent students and families from the Aldershot and downtown Burlington communities. Words one and two. For the last eight years, thank you to the constituents who allowed me to represent you here at the Halton District School Board table. I have immense gratitude to all of you folks around the table, to my colleague trustees, my student trustees. Thank you for your collective effort to make good things happen for someone else, for putting kids first, and your obligation to always focus on the big picture. I have immense gratitude to all the SOs. Thank you for your lovely words today. But I will always remember the way you made us trustees feel. You were always there for us when we pummeled you with questions, concerns. When we needed your support, you were there. So thank you for your collective service to our system. Keep focusing on your interdependence, and please continue to support our Director of Education. Director Ennis, thank you. I appreciate your vision, your values, your leadership. And I know that this board is in very good hands. I have no doubt the students, staff, and system will continue to feel the impact of your service and work far beyond us here at the table today. So I have some parting words. My wish, my wish, I'm going to sound like Tolkien here, actually, because it's true. My wish is for all students and all communities that we will get one school board system to govern them all. And one system to find them. One system to bring them all in. Okay, I won't continue and quote Tolkien, but my point is we're really lucky to be part of the public system. Whether the religious, racial, ethnic makeup of our schools reflect the diversity of our communities from which they draw their students. While I realize this isn't within your purview, please don't underestimate your influence and your voices. And my wish for you, or my hope is that one strong public school system will support a community of tolerance and that is fostered by respectful and mutually enriching engagement, not isolation and physically separate development. So with that, Trustee Reynolds is out.
All right, your turn.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I remember starting this role and thinking, whoa, I'll never be able to talk like them. And here we are, eight years later. So I've left everybody something. And if I haven't, I, I will. It's a patch. And I always like a metaphor, and quoting Canadian musicians. But here we go with a metaphor. So a patch. It's a piece of cloth or a material used to strengthen another. For me, this is very symbolic of our time together, all of us. We came together to strengthen the system, to support students first and foremost, staff and community here and beyond. These patches, well, they have smooth and rough parts, and they have sides to them that give them dimension, nuance, and create interest. But it's those rough parts that, they make them stick, just like, you know, some of the rough patches we've had and the ideas that have stuck. A patch is also something that's, it's bigger on its, but with its own characteristics. It's part of something bigger, but it has its own characteristics. Each of you here in the room and through the HDSB and in the community have unique and wonderful characteristics. So many of you taught me so, so many things that I think are a blessing to the system and to me individually for that, I'm super grateful. Sure, sometimes the edges are and were a bit frayed and will continue to be. But our patches have been knit together to make something not found anywhere else. And it has been and will continue to be quite special in my life. It's been an honor to serve the HDSB community in this capacity for eight years. The Vice Chair has been such a wonderful role, and I thank you so much for, for that honor. I want to thank my parents. My dad passed away and was really an inspiration for me seeking this role. Terry and Carl always felt that public service, no matter how hard, was a labor of love and very worth doing. And I agree with them. I want to thank my family, Doug, and especially Luke and Michaela, who I love so very deeply. I want to thank them for their ongoing curiosity. Their very interesting advice that they have provided quite frequently, and their support. And it's their lived experiences that inspired this adventure, and an adventure it has been. So all the best to trustees-elect Carol Baxter and colleagues are going to rocket. And to the trustee and SO team and Director Ennis, Manager Carrillo, everybody as you move forward. Just all the best. I look forward to keeping in touch. And now lastly, I understand that November is gratitude month. And with that, I say simply and sincerely, thank you, one and all. May your lives be filled with peace and love. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, we're now on to public questions. So during the pandemic, we as a board made a commitment to ensure that the HDSB website gave a link which allowed members of the public to ask questions to the board, particularly relating to issues that have arisen during the meeting. Questions received tonight may be answered during the meeting and may already have been, already been done so. They may be delayed to the following meeting at the discretion of the Chair. Multiple questions received that are similar in nature may be grouped together and a notation will be made that multiple people ask the same question. Questions will not be attributed. And any question that contains language that is hateful or discriminatory will not be considered. Vice Chair El Harrison, are there any questions from the public this evening?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, there were a number. And I sincerely tried to raise most of them that were related to the dress code under that particular discussion piece. Now, some people were, they were coming in fast and furious at, at one point. But again, I do believe directing people back to, it was approximately 8:20 in the video for Superintendent Taha's thorough response and, and the questions and answers that were given will serve in the best way. And as it is an operational issue, that those would either flow through your trustees to staff or directly to staff. There is another topic that comes up a couple of times that I do believe relates to trustees. And that is with respect to the letter, the motion to write a letter to the Minister of Education from September 21st. And that's with respect to the, the section of the Education Act. And that section of the Education Act is 264-1C. And with your, I can start a response if you wish. So the genesis of that particular report comes from some professional training that Chair Shuttleworth and I did in the summer. And one of the questions was, why was the report not discussed publicly? So at the Committee of the Whole meeting in September, and people are welcome and invited to go back and check out the video, the ideas were presented and then flipped into a report the very next day for people. And the, the challenge that we are requesting be considered by the Minister of Education is simply around naming Judeo-Christian morality in absence of other, others. It has nothing to do with wanting to remove values from here. It's just, somebody was saying today that there are a number of contradictory things that exist in the Education Act as it is right now. And, and this is one of them, where on the one hand, there are many clauses that talk about inclusion. And this sort of singles out, as if Judeo-Christians, of which I am, I must say, are the only ones that hold truth, justice, loyalty, love of country, and so on, of value. And I think that's what we are, that's where that, that piece comes from. It also comes from long discussions with Indigenous peoples and those on staff and outside of staff who hold this up as an example of legacy colonialism. And given the board's commitment to truth and reconciliation, particularly calls to Action 62 and 63, it was felt that firstly, let me say that this is not unique to this board that we're raising this. Indigenous partners have raised this on a, a number of occasions. So that's sort of the, the impetus and where it's coming from. So part A, it was discussed publicly a number of times at those September meetings. Its genesis came from training, from training in July. And another question was with respect to moratorium on changes. And if, if our experience is, holds true, the minister often takes months and years to, to consider and respond. So, so that's likely not an issue. And we haven't heard back some weeks later yet and likely don't expect to for some time. So thank you for letting me answer that question. And if anybody else, trustees, have any commentary to add, please feel free. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair El Harrison. And again, I know I did answer a phone call on the same topic yesterday. I'm always happy to sort of discuss these pieces of information with members of the public. So again, and just coming back to that, we always want to remind you all that there's several ways to be heard by the Board of Trustees. So there is this question-and-answer portion of the meeting, which really needs to focus on the government issues and things that come up in the meeting. You can also choose to delegate the board if you so choose. Optimally, the best way for you to be heard and receive a response is to reach out directly to your local trustee. Trustee contact details are available on the hdsb.ca website. And that brings us to item 8.0, our adjournment. And I first of all, want to thank you all very much for coming tonight and engaging in a positive and productive way. We appreciate that you came, that you listened, and hopefully you learned a little bit more about some of the areas that interest you, that you came to hear about. And again, if you do want further information, always reach out and we can direct you as to where you can look for that information. For the trustees who will not be returning to the table, please don't be strangers. Although you will no longer be trustees at the table with us, at the trustee table, I hope there are many other tables that we will, we will be able to enjoy time together at in the future. And I don't quote Canadians, but I do quote rappers because my son is a big rapper. And I'm going to take a page out of Snoop Dogg's quotes. I knew you'd like him. So he says, "It's hard to say goodbye to the streets, or in this case, the board. It's all how you do it. You can pass by and say, what's happening? And keep it moving. But it's a certain element that will never be able to roll with you once you get to this level because that's a separation of it all." Know that we hope that certain elements will continually roll with you. We look forward to hearing about all your future success and adventures and hope to be able to share some of them with you. Thank you for all the dedication, hard work, and grace that you have brought to this table. And with that, our agenda is exhausted, and I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.